So we're without a leader, but we need to pick a leader?
Correct. Our Chair and Vice Chair are not with us this evening, so if the Commissioners that are present could...
Could I make a motion?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion that our former Chairman, Josh, be our Chairman tonight.
I'll second that motion.
So moved.
I don't want to call for a vote, but okay. Sure. I'll go for it. Well, let's formally welcome everybody then and jump into the agenda. First item is opening and approval of the minutes from the March 24th meeting. Any comments or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 24th, 2022 meeting.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next item is a conditional use permit for a major home occupation B for pest control services for Rich Howes of Mosquito Hunters at 1523 West Pheasant Meadow Drive.
Okay, and I was just gonna say, if you... Oh, that is so loud, sorry. If you didn't sign, there's a signup sheet just right out front, so make sure that you guys got signed up on that. And our first, or number two on our agenda is a conditional use permit for Rich Howes and his wife there, the owners of Mosquito Hunters. They live at 1523 Pheasant Meadow Drive. It's a single-family residential. It's an R18 neighborhood. And we're looking to do a major B home occupation in that neighborhood with his mosquito abatement business. Oh, I might have typed that in wrong. No.
It's a field.
So it's in the packet?
Yeah, it's in the packet.
So Mr. Howes has one vehicle for his service that will be, it will come in the morning. Well, do you want to come up and explain?
Yeah, come on up to the microphone here, tell us your name, and then describe just kind of the background of what the business is and what it will look like at the property.
My name's Rich Howes. I'm the owner of Mosquito Hunters. It's a franchise. And we hunt, just like it says, mosquitoes, fleas, and ticks, so we take care of you, get your backyard back with our services. Can you hear me?
Can you stand closer to the... There you go.
We can hear you, but the recording doesn't pick it up very well. Yeah.
I have one van right now that will be, you know, just parked in the driveway, and then it'll be on its route going to do it during the day. There'll be myself that will be living in the home, will be taking some calls. I have a business manager that is remote. She has a cellphone. She will be remotely away from the home, so there's really nothing going to be seen at the house except for the van at nighttime parking there. So there's not going to be any flashing neon signs or anything like that going on, but there will be just the van sitting there, and then in the morning it'll go on its route and go do its jobs Monday through Friday, and then whatever picking up on Saturday, you know, whatever we've got behind it, whether it flies or whatever.
Okay. Anything else from staff?
We recommend approval.
Okay, so discussion amongst Planning Commission, and I'll just give a quick preface because we have a few conditional use permits. You know, our task as a commission, as a reminder, and then just as information for those who are here in the audience, we are to look at it and say, are there any detrimental impacts, reasonably foreseeable detrimental impacts that might come to the neighborhood because of this use? And if so, can we impose conditions to mitigate those impacts? And if there are conditions, then we should say, yes, these are the conditions, and therefore we are approving it with conditions. That's our task. So discussion amongst the Commissioner or any comments?
Staff, thank you for the report. It seemed pretty straightforward to me. This is Commissioner Allred. The question I had was, I guess, for the applicant, no employees coming to the home and no storage of chemicals at the property?
You know, my vendor is going to store my chemicals until I can get into an off-site area. And right now, it's me and my wife doing the spraying, so we have no vehicles, no employees as yet. We're trying to get hired and trying to get some folks hired. It's pretty difficult at this time, so... But we do have a Plan B for that. I will take the truck over to Smith's parking lot in the morning. And then, once that... My applicant is good enough, and I feel good enough, he can take that, or she can take the vehicle home with him.
Yeah. Generally, my experience with home occupations has been that if no one's coming to the home, and you're not storing any hazardous materials of any kind, there's no hazard to the neighbors, it should be a pretty straightforward ability to approve unless, as my fellow Commissioner said, you know, there needs to be conditions imposed, and I don't see any from my perspective as staff based on what is in the staff report. I don't see any additional conditions over and above what's in the code.
I have one additional question. Just do you anticipate much by way of supplies being delivered to your home frequently or?
My vendor will take all that. I mean, I might get some mail from bills that I gotta pay, but that's about how long I see. It's a franchise, so it's a lot, you know, it's a lot of that at the call centers in New Jersey, takes all my calls, does all that stuff.
Question for staff. Do we have a prohibition about in Kaysville? Sorry, as a new Commissioner, I don't know. I should look this up. But do we have any prohibition against employees working in a home occupation or coming to the home? Some cities do, some cities don't. Just ask.
So we actually discussed this. We went through and read. So in a minor home occupation, you can have one employee, a non-related employee, come in. In a major B, no, major A home occupation, you can. A non-related employee. But where we're doing a major B home occupation, because of the type of business that it is, there cannot be anyone coming to the home or working in the home unless they're actually related or a resident of the home.
Okay. Yeah, that's pretty standard for many cities, so.
Yeah, and in this case, the code actually specifies that pest control would be a major home occupation, so.
Oh, it's specifically listed, okay.
Exactly, so.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, we tried. We talked it through and read through code and found a way to work around it.
There are some exclusions from that. Of course, daycare being one of them, where you have somebody who can come to the home, who can provide a service, who's not related to the property and or doesn't live at the property.
Which is also a major B home occupation.
Exactly.
Conditions could be placed on that at the time.
Yeah, cities struggle with that.
But as far as traffic coming in and out of the neighborhood, it's a brand-new neighborhood. It looks awesome down there. I don't see any of that being a problem. He's storing chemicals off-site. As of right now, we don't have an employee that's needing to come to the home. I see it's pretty straightforward.
And you guys are all gonna buy my service. That's the best, but rather, if you live in Kaysville.
West Kaysville especially.
Okay, go for it.
I'm ready to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for a major home B occupation for pest control services for Rich Howes of Mosquito Hunters for the property at 1523 West Pheasant Meadow Drive.
I will second that motion.
Okay, second. A motion, a second. Let's go start with Larry.
Okay.
Aye.
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 Alrighty. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just send you a letter tomorrow, giving you, just stating everything that we just talked about, and there's no additional conditions placed, so we're all good. I'll approve your business license tomorrow, and you guys should be good to get going, so.
Okay, let's go to the third item on our agenda, which is a conditional use permit also for a major home B occupation for landscaping services for Zachary Nash at 1698 South 800 East.
Sure, so this is for Precision Landscaping. Are you Zach? Yeah, okay. Yeah, why don't you come on up, and I'll just introduce this. So he lives in, he's actually right behind the showstoppers where the Hope Box is at. So we actually had a lot of people calling, not sure which ones they were calling for on the conditional uses since we had signs out for both of them. So for this one, this is for Precision Landscaping. He's had business licenses with us off and on through, since 2017.
Yeah, this last time, I was planning on going on another route, but decided not to, so.
And so he has a truck and a dumpster trailer that he uses for this landscaping business, that he'll be using for his mowers. And that businesses generally leave an eight home by five, and there will be no employees there or no employees at the home. And he said that there, well, we can show you that there is a side pad to park the truck and the trailer on the side of the home so that it's not on the road. Is this the correct house?
Yes.
Phew, okay.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anything else that she missed that you want to add? Okay. Commissioner, same task as the last item, so any questions or comments?
I have a question. The size of the vehicle that you use.
It's $2,500 round.
Okay. That wouldn't fall into a category of a large commercial vehicle that may be prohibited on certain streets. I've dealt with one before where it was a dump truck, a big dump truck, and they were taking it up into a neighborhood, and neighbors were concerned, and we said, yeah, you have to stay on a truck route. If it's just a pickup truck, that would be my, that would be my only concern.
So just to clarify then, no trailers or equipment, bobcats or what have you that are going to be stored on the site?
Just the one trailer on the side.
Okay.
Can you speak to the dumpster, the size of the dumpster, and where that will be stored or located?
Dumpster trailer. It's just an enclosed, I have just side.
That was a trailer. That is the trailer, okay.
Okay, and no employees or customers visiting? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Go for it.
I motioned that we approve the home occupation conditional use request for Zach Nash and Precision Landscaping at 1698 South 300 East based upon the findings of the staff report and with the, with compliance with the city's regulations for home occupations. Or for, excuse me, for conditional use.
Okay, you have a motion?
Second it.
All right, motion, a second. We'll start with Cody.
I'll, oh, you got a second?
Oh, yeah, we got a second, sorry. We got, we got two seconds now.
You're double covered.
Start with Cody.
Aye.
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 Aye. Alrighty, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Fourth item on the agenda, another conditional use permit, this for a model home design center for Destination Homes at 2095 West 200 North.
Okay, I'm upon this one, I guess. This is for Destination Homes.
Let's have Dan, we'll explain things, and then if we have questions, we'll have you come up. Thank you.
Perfect. I'll give you a good chance. This, this project's probably been going for 10 years. And they, when this phase here got finished up, they had this, it's on the corner of Second North. And, can't remember the address, 2095 West, and they used that for a design center, model home. They've been using this, I think, since, for the last four or five years. They have one phase left. First question that come in my head was, hey, they're all done with all those houses down there. But then I remembered that the initial Hill Farms was gonna go through six phases, I believe, and the last one finished up in Layton, and so it's all the same. It's been on the books ever since, as all phases. In a conditional use, it allows for them to use it for the, for a model home. And once we, once we've granted it, I guess, they can keep using it as long as they keep coming back for a year or till the project's done. So the project's still in, they're still developing that Phase 6, so that's why I justified rolling it. And I recommend that they're used, or they're allowed to continue conditional use for that model home for the, either one year, if you guys decide, or till they finish up the last house in that Phase 6. That's my recommendations.
Okay, thank you. Why don't you come up and tell us your name, and we may have some questions for you?
Yeah, so I'm Shannon Brown. I actually am one of the designers at the Design Center, and yeah, any questions?
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, any comments or questions?
Just have a point of clarification. I probably didn't read the staff report correctly. Is this just a, an extension of a previous conditional use to keep it in place?
Yes, sir. It's been, is a conditional use, I think, in 2017, if I remember right. But it's just an extension. We were at one time gonna take this off the, so we didn't have to bring these back every time before Lyle left, and it never did happen, so it's still on the books that they need to keep coming back. And so that's why, that's why it's back, but we were trying to mitigate it, so we didn't do it, but that's why we're here.
You've answered my question, which is, why is this coming back if they're still there? It's because it's technically on the books, and it has to be done according to the law. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yeah, as soon as we can, we would like to get it so it's not.
Yeah.
I will say, I'm, just as, as background, you know, support, I suppose, for the conversation just happened. I do think, in the vast, vast majority of cases, this can be handled at staff level, so, you know, bug in yours for the future. But, but I will also say that we did get one comment from a neighbor who claimed, at least, to be representing other neighbors, who said, I'll just try my best to characterize what I understood the comment was, and the Commissioner can correct me if I'm wrong. It basically said, hey, you know, we recognize model homes are needed, but number one, the only phase that's left is in Layton City, and number two, this really isn't a model home anymore. It's a design center. I think that was the comment. To me, I don't think that that nudges it away at all from approval. I think with a conditional use, if we can, again, impose conditions, we are bound to approve it with those conditions. So we can't just say, nope, no more model home. It has to be sold. We have to say, what are the conditions to impose? So I think even with those concerns, it could still be handled at staff level for the future, but, but maybe it was worthwhile coming back at least to have the conversation again. So any questions, comments, or a motion? How about that?
I did have one question, just based on the commentary that we did receive. If you could just speak to that of the use of it as a design center, is it also still be using, being used as a model home as well?
Yeah, yeah, so I believe that they just finished completion of a model home that's in Phase 7. That's the last phase. It's not Phase 6, it's Phase 7. But, so they just finished a model home, so it's majority of the time being used as the design center, but it doubles as both, so.
Then I will ask a follow-up question, maybe if Cody was already gonna do this. What does that look like? Because in my mind, a model home is, you know, it's open during business hours, and you might have, you know, depending on the market, a handful of people or more coming there a day, so that's a model home. What does a design center look like in terms of the traffic and the people that come and go?
Yeah, so it's even less. Myself and then my manager, head designer, we're there several times throughout the week, just parking in the garage. If we do have home buyers coming to meet, and that can be happening maybe one to two times throughout the week. Right now, it's even less, and they just park there just as if someone was there visiting the house, and they're there for three, four hours at a time. So it's very minimal. It's even less than you would see at a model home.
Okay. That's helpful, I think.
Very.
Anyone want to give a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I motion that we approve the model home, excuse me, I'm trying to scroll down to the right one. I had it, and I bumped it. The model home for the, oh, help me out here. Where's my agenda? Excuse me. Sorry about that, everyone. I move that we approve the conditional use permit for a model home design center for Destination Homes for a property at 2095 West and 200 North, as proposed in the staff report, and as recommended by, and as recommended for approval by staff with the conditions listed therein that it must follow, that has to, is it closed within?
We could.
Finishing up of the subdivision?
You could probably pass it to finish at the end of the completion, that they just terminated at that point. You don't want to see it again next year.
Yes. Is that acceptable?
Yeah, if I were to say, so our last dig is to be in October of next year, 2023, so we would just ask that it would go through the end of 2023 would be our request.
With that, with that input from the applicant, I will amend my motion that this would be for a period to last no longer than December 31st of 2023, or if the work is completed sooner, whichever is sooner, whenever the work is done and it follows code, or the date certain of December 31st, 2023. And my, the findings to support this are the recommendation from the staff who have reviewed this, plus the testimony which has been given this evening, that the impact of this, of this design center is less, has less of an impact on a neighborhood than a single-family home that would be occupied by family, would in terms of traffic, in terms of how often somebody is there. It's an extremely low-impact use, even for a residential area. So based on that, that would be my motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that long motion.
Very good, very good motion. All right, let's start with Jared.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. All right, our final conditional use permit is for Showstopper Productions for a theater at 1700 South Frontage Road.
Is this one me, too? I guess it's me.
Okay, Dan, go for it.
I don't know. Do you wanna? I'm giving, I'm handing off. All right, here we go. This is for the Showstoppers Productions. It's out on the Frontage Road, and I'm sure you drove by it, 17 South, 1700 South. It's on 1.22 acres. Right now, there is a, I think it's been there since 2014, theater. They have little play productions. They have practices. They keep pretty much busy throughout the week. They try to shut down at reasonable hours. They do have six or so major productions where they do fill up the, have quite a few people there six times a year. What they're trying to do is, right now, they seat 133 people. They're trying to expand it to 213, I believe. And so they want to expand the building where the theater is, actual theater, plus then they want a place to build production things, store production things, and have a little storage room. We've looked at it, and we've decided that they have room to make adequate parking for the size increase seating. I believe they are supposed to come up with, when you do the math for the required seating with 45 stalls, they actually will have 55 stalls in place, and I have had no complaints in the history of that they've been here. We've had, the only people that's called me is make sure that we're not shutting it down. Everybody seems to enjoy having it. I guess they do a lot of good things for the people, the community, keeps the kids occupied. I think it's a good thing. Staff recommends that they are allowed to expand, and the conditional use is probably what we're mostly after, just to increase the amount of time that there will be people there from the original and the amount of shows that was original. They're gonna amplify that up a little bit, but we've, in the history, we have had no complaints. They have increased the parking. We see no, no reason why they shouldn't be granted conditional use for what they are proposing.
Okay, thank you. Is there someone with, for the applicant? If you want to come up to the microphone, tell us your name, and then maybe tell us anything that Dan might have missed.
Okay, my name is Curtis Dalton. Boy, Dan, that was a great write-up right there. Now, what I, I just wanted to say is, we did, we did start about the end of 2015. We started out with 25 students as Showstopper Productions. One of our founders, Jan Williams, is a four-time cancer survivor, so the entire premises of the theater is honoring people in the community that are battling cancer through the performing arts. And so this mission has really taken us a long way. It's exploded. It's grown a lot. Our current space has some limitations. We've got a big pole right in our center stage. I don't know if any of you guys have seen a production there. We also have maybe some accessibility issues, so the new theater space would help mitigate some of these issues, get rid of a lot of our big green lawn that will be brown this summer, and give us some desperately needed additional parking space. So that is the hope of it. What we'll basically do is take our old theater and turn it into more of a rehearsal space, storage space. Theaters need a lot of space to store props, costumes, et cetera, rehearse, and then do all of our main productions on the new theater, so.
Okay, thank you.
Did send a video that I can try and play if it's okay with your permission?
Yeah, let's see it, absolutely.
This is the birth of the Hope Box right here, guys, right here. Trying to make it right. And we, we don't need to, if it didn't work out, but, yeah, I mean, that's where the idea was born, is a group of her former students came one evening, and they serenaded her on her front porch, and she just, her heart was melding. She's like, I, we gotta make a theater and make this for people to bring them hope. And so that, that's where it was born, and I did personally go and knock all of the adjacent property owners' doors. I was able to speak to seven of them personally. A few of them were totally oblivious to what we were doing, even all that time living there. Many of them were just extremely ecstatic with what we're doing and love everything about what we're doing. Some, a few of them said, hey, whatever we gotta do to make this happen, let's just, let's make this happen for you. So like Dan said, we haven't had any complaints or anything. They were just super excited to have us. But we do realize that we are in a residential zone, but we feel a little more isolated from the residential zone just due to the fact that we're on such a busy frontage-type road, so it's all good.
Okay, thank you. If you, if you have Kaysville street cred, you'll know that this used to be Mitchell's Nursery a long time ago. So anyway, this might be an improvement on a nursery, but maybe not. Depends who you talk to. Okay. Any comments or questions from the Commission?
I have one. You actually have Frontage on a, on the Frontage Road, which is UDOT, correct? This is owned by UDOT?
I would imagine so.
This is, this is UDOT right-of-way. I'm pretty sure.
I think it's a city street, but I could be wrong.
It's a city street.
Oh, did it get turned over? Because those used to be rest stops way back in the day. That, at Burton Lane there, that whole...
I believe in that picture right there, that black line.
Yeah.
Would be anything west of that.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. I'm thinking this is on the other side of that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you. I was just gonna say, is there any concern or have, I still have a legitimate question, and that is... First one was bad.
Scratch the first one.
Well, it's the same issue, but now that I understand it, it helps. In terms of, because you're expanding, and, and I, I love the fact that your staff has answered my question with parking, because it seems like a pretty small property to fit that many stalls in. But I don't, doesn't really matter to me, is if they've got the parking, they've got the parking. However, I do have a question or two about whether or not you have overflow. Do you have times where there's overflow and it goes out onto the public street? And have there been issues? You know?
Right.
That would be my only concern, is because, you know...
I would be misleading the commission if I, I said no. I mean, parking definitely is an issue. Probably for, for most type of venues, you know, depending on the event at the time, there can be some parking issues. We do encourage our, our cast members and crew to, to carpool, or sometimes they'll go park a ways away and then come in to try to alleviate some of the, the traffic congestion, yeah.
I have a follow-up question similar to that. And, and first, I have to say, love what you do, my kids benefit from, from your services. But I have, and this is from lived experience. The only concern that I would have with this is that I've noticed, particularly when you have a lot of classes happening, that the tendency of, of parents is to build a line to pick up their kids, which goes out into the lane, you know, the one lane on the Frontage Road. And so, and I, I have seen that, you know, cars that are trying to pass that line almost have head-on collisions. So that, that's the one concern that I have with this. Can you speak to just the, the number of additional parking stalls that will be added there? I was trying to count on the, the plan or the plot.
Yeah, so we, we'll have, I believe in, right now, we have in the neighborhood of 40. But with the new theater, that'll take up some of those stalls. So at the end of the day, we'll end up with about 55 parking stalls. I have spoken to, oh, let's see, where's the name, Mrs. Northam. She owns, see how we're missing that one piece in our map right there? Her and her husband are getting older, and I proposed the idea to her of maybe purchasing the back piece of her property, that would make her property the same size as all of the other adjacent properties, which would meet the requirement for the zone that they're in. And, and she seemed agreeable, she said she'd have to explore that further with her husband, but we'd like to be able to pick up some additional land is what we're looking at. The people also adjacent to us were also agreeable to possibly doing that. If Mrs. Northam even sold us 10 feet of her property, that would allow us to eliminate that 45-degree parking, which would really help maximize the parking. We're also going to get rid of that big overgrown growth area that's kind of on that bend, and then relocate our entrance slash exit more towards the center of the property and get it off of that corner, because I agree that is very dangerous, so.
So typically with conditional use permits, we don't necessarily take public comment, but I think with the few numbers here, and it sounds like from what staff said, we have, might have have, might have some people here who want to speak to this. So if you wouldn't mind sitting down, and if we have further questions, we'll call you back up. But if anyone else is here that wants to talk to this, you're welcome to come up to the microphone and ask questions or make comments.
He has answered a question I had.
Okay.
Parking spaces, I just didn't hear how many additional there would be.
Okay. Come on up to the, yeah, sorry. Come on up to the microphone and tell us your name and then make your comment.
Good evening, my name is Derek Rainer, I'm also involved with the Hope Box Theater. With the new parking layout, vehicles will be able to enter and go around the area, so the line of park, parents waiting for their kids will be in our parking lot instead of going on the main street. And so it actually will, just the layout of that situation will increase and encourage parents to come in around, so they're not on the main street, they're in our parking lot instead.
Thank you. One, one question I have, and I think I could guess the answer, but let's just clarify. The fact that this is residential zone, R18, I think it is, you know, obviously, like every zone, they all have, we have permitted uses listed. Is the fact that it's a theater, is that's why it's coming to us as a conditional use, is that why it's here?
Yes, sir. One time it was Mitchell Nursery, that was a church. And then right after the church, this came into play. And I think that's when they first started the conditional use process, was when they was converting from a church to the, to the theater and they allotted them. And so ever since then, it's been conditional use.
Okay, thank you. And then, I guess this is more of a comment than a question. My concern is, I used to lay out parking lots for, for a living, design them. This one looks tight, I think it might work. But as long as the dimensions fit, I mean, specifically, I think this one, I don't know what the Kaysville's requirement is, but, that's not gonna work. The, the aisle, the drive aisle in the angled parking, that looks narrow. I, as long as it works for the city's minimum dimensions for parking, I'm fine. But I would just make sure, I guess I would just suggest to staff, if you haven't already, to confirm all the dimensions of the stalls and the drive aisles. Because 99% of the time, this largely sits empty, but the times that it's busy, it gets busy. And we would need to make sure that it flows well and, you know, isn't too, too tight.
I had the same exact concern you did. And that is, without this being dimensioned and checked by staff, that middle aisle between the angled stalls would only be, would be my only concern. You can go down to as little as 22 feet on 90-degree stalls backing onto each other. I've seen that work, but you do have to be careful on angled, or you end up locking those up and they're, they just sit there. One other comment is that whenever, I've seen this done in a couple of spots, and it, it's just a suggestion. I'm not saying that we add it as a condition of approval, but we may want to consider it. And that is, when you're going to have events, because parking and drop-off and that kind of thing could be a little bit complicated. Sometimes I've seen businesses pull a little sign out the day of an event to say, "Event tonight, caution with parking," or directional signs. I've seen that with charter schools, I've seen that with other businesses. There's nothing wrong with parking on a public right-of-way. I happen to be somebody who's probably contrary to most people who say, people shouldn't be parking in the street. No, that's public property, that's what it's for, and it can slow traffic down. But because of the nature of this, where there's small children, you know, a lot of kids being there, I would be a little bit concerned about overusing the public right-of-way without drawing attention to those who are passing by, or those who are going to be coming to the site when you have an event, it's just a thought. I don't know that we need to make it a condition, we did with the charter school, I worked with in another community, and, and it worked very, very well, because they had some real near misses, if you want to, you know, some real serious problems. So just some thoughts for the planning commission.
Just really quickly, if I could brainstorm some of the, some of the reasonably foreseeable detrimental impacts, I would say, of course, traffic. So are we, are we handling the parking, parking needs well enough? Number one is a question. Number two, because this is not quite a commercial use, but it looks a little more commercial certainly than a residential use, especially single-family. There's gonna be lighting in the parking lot. I think we probably have some provisions in our code already that, that maybe address that or mitigate that. But maybe we want to talk about lighting, fencing. You know, there's gonna be cars with, with headlights shining into residential properties. Maybe we want to consider fence conditions. I'm trying to think what else, you know. I, I don't personally think that there's gonna be, you know, issues with more common retail or commercial things like noise, or deliveries, trucks, those sorts of things. So maybe we don't have to put conditions to mitigate those things. But those are some impacts that I could foresee that we, maybe we want to mitigate.
Chair, if I may, just to let the commission have a bit of comfort and also the public. When, well, they wanted the conditional use expansion prior to spending money to engineering and designing and all of that. So when it comes to us for site plan approval, we'll certainly go through, it doesn't, it's an administrative through staff. But staff will ensure that those parking spaces are, that the count meets what the requirement would be for code. We would also ensure that they meet the minimum standards with space in between them and all of that. So we'll have an opportunity, once the expansion of the conditional use is approved. The next step would be that the applicant would come in and get a site plan approval and then a building permit. And so we'll review that at that point.
And so, yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Say one thing, too. On those parking spots, I didn't scale them out or whatever.
Yeah.
But once I got to 44 or 45, that's what they were required, I figured we can make the rest. Or even if they don't work.
Yeah.
We're at, what, what I require as far as the number per seat, so the stalls, so, so...
You're talking the number of stalls?
Yeah, the number of stalls.
Yeah, I think we're talking about dimensions for traffic circulation.
Dimensions, we can, I mean, I did not scale them out at, at this point, because it's just kind of a site plan preliminary before they did. But I just, I did look at it and I made sure that it looked like 45 would work, you know. The 55 may, may not, but it scales out and like you guys are talking. But that's, that's what I was looking at.
I mean, my thought is, if we didn't even put this condition on, it would be there impliedly. They would have to meet these things, we'd have to meet these things anyway. But we could just say, as long as it meets dimensionally and the traffic flows, which is an administrative decision, we're fine. And here are some other conditions, if, if any. I think that's all the applicant's looking for, it sounds like.
Yeah, and hours of operation is one that's commonly considered with things like this, too, that, you know, you wouldn't have late hours or shows that would start after a certain time. That would be another consideration.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
So I guess what makes it a little unique is, say if I had my own home and I wanted to do an addition, so long as my addition met the setback requirements, I wouldn't need any additional...
Height setback.
You know, approval, right? I could just draft it up and get it engineered and get a building permit.
Yep.
Where we're on a conditional use permit and we're non-conforming for the zone, that's where it becomes the issue, where we'd like to expand our current footprint. So that, in your code, there's only a couple exceptions for that. And, and that's what we're trying to do, is get that approval before we invest a lot of money designing and everything to be told no down the road. So we're just trying to make sure that the, the Planning and Zoning Commission is on board with us proceeding with the possibility, so long as we abide by the code and the ordinances that would govern that, so.
Right, yeah, makes sense, okay.
Just a comment for the future. In, in my opinion, this is really not a conditional use issue. This is a site plan issue. The use has been established, the use has been in place for how long?
Since 2015.
Okay, for seven years, we've had a use that the city has recognized and has been operating correctly, without problems, without issues, right? So that being the case, this is really an expansion, not of the use, but of, but it's a site plan, it's an amendment to the site plan. Because the use isn't changing in terms of what they do, right? Are you gonna be doing anything different than you were doing before, or just more of the same?
Just more of the same.
More of the same. So from my perspective, as somebody who's dealt with this in the past, I would, I would say that this is really a, a site plan review. And in most cities, site plans go before the planning commission so that the staff can say, they meet the lighting, they meet the fencing, they meet the parking. Because the use is not really an issue here, from, from what I can see in the staff report. I could be wrong on that, but, and, and I'm not saying that the city has to go back and change the way they do it, but I've seen a lot of instances in my, my experience with this has been that these would come and to the planning commission only for the review of the expanded site plan. And that way, we wouldn't be asking the planning commission, I think inappropriately in this case, to grant the expansion of use that's non-conforming, which doesn't sound, that doesn't sound kosher under the law. We want to expand a non-conforming use. So use that the city has either accepted or grandfathered in. But for the planning commission to grant approval for this expansion without knowing whether or not it complies with building height, landscaping, parking and all of that, is kind of putting the cart before the horse. Having said that, I am in favor of the proposal as is, and I will probably, and I will support with my vote to approve this, subject to it coming to the staff for a site plan approval. But I do want to call into question the procedural issue there, which I think is substantive. You really shouldn't be granting approval to expand this thing without knowing whether or not it can technically comply with all of the other... You say, well, we'll make sure it does, well, what if it doesn't? Then we said yes at the planning commission level on the conditional use, but without knowing whether or not it could meet with the technical aspects of the other aspects of the code. Not complaining, just...
We did discuss internally whether or not this was a non-conforming use, and determined that it, now it's gonna be really confusing, that it was not a non-conforming use.
Okay.
So the terminology that was used, our code would not allow for the expansion of a non-conforming use.
Right.
So, but we felt like it was appropriate to bring this forward, given the increase in the intensity of the conditional use, that there could be additional conditions based on that increase that the commission would, would apply.
Yeah, that helps a lot, because from, in planners, legalese, you do not want to say, hey, we're gonna grant approval of an expansion of a non-conforming use. Unless that strictly complies with the standards you have for an expansion of non-conforming use, you shouldn't consider it. That way, I think you would just kick this under to the site plan aspect. And, and you do, we do have regulations for parking and lighting and all those kinds of things in our site plan section, correct?
Yeah. So in, in what we're considering this under is inter-conditional uses. 1712 for section, or paragraph one. It allows for public or quasi-public buildings of the educational, recreational, religious, cultural, or public service type. So we're classifying this as a cultural theater use.
That's exactly how I, when I read the staff report, I thought, the, at first thought I had was, wait, does this comply? Yes, it clearly complies with the zone the way I read it. So therefore, it's really a site plan issue. The use has already been established, but that's for the future. For now, I'm in favor of the proposal, I think it's a great use. It doesn't have direct connection to the neighborhood for traffic. It's on the Frontage Road, and I think it's just incumbent upon the owner to manage how the site is operated, especially when there's events or things like that, to just make sure you've got ample public safety out there.
Come on up, speaking to the mic, yeah.
The, all along the Frontage Road, the speed limit will vary, I think, depending on maybe the density of the residential housing along it. And in that area, I don't know if they just kind of feel like, hey, it's kind of opened up, let's kind of open up the speed limit. Is there a way to look at maybe reducing the speed limit through that zone as it is reduced in some other areas along the Frontage Road?
I think that's a question for staff.
Yeah, I mean, my thought is, I don't even, maybe it is, maybe that's within our purview, I don't think so. But certainly, that's something the, the city staff can look at. I don't know that that's necessarily a condition we could mandate, but...
Yeah, that's a staff decision.
So a good comment, but I think staff could probably evaluate that and talk with whoever needs to be...
That's your city, that's your city engineer, working with your police department. Usually, it's a city council decision on, a speed limit is almost always a city council issue.
Okay. I wasn't sure where they were derived from, but just a thought I've had.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a planning commission purview, they don't have the authority to do that. But they can send a recommendation to, the staff could take a recommendation to the council that, hey, this issue came up at planning commission. Does, does, is there an appetite to look at the speed limit on the Frontage Road? Because it does vary.
Right.
You know?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone want to give a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Go for it.
If no one else will. I motion that the Kaysville Planning Commission approve, hold on, computer, wake up. I motion that the Kaysville Planning Commission approve, hold on, computer, wake up, wake up, what happened? That we approve the conditional use permit for showstopper productions, for an expansion of a theater, and internal, internal, your internal operations, at seventeen hundred South Frontage Road, based on the staff report and the discussion the planning commission has had with staff tonight regarding the use and the site plan issues. Especially understanding that this will be reviewed by staff at the plan, at the, by the staff level for site plan, for site plan compliance. And I would add that, I would add a condition to my motion, and that would be that the staff report back to the planning commission on any, on any areas of non-compliance with our site development standards. And that if they are not able to comply, this issue will need to come back for an amendment to the conditional use permit. Because again, I think we're, we're kind of saying, you can do it no matter what, we don't know that.
So, let me get this straight. If, if there's, if there's an issue that we come up with that isn't ordinance in our site plan, we come back, but if everything's as per ordinance, we're good?
Yeah, and that's how it would, that's how it is. The reason that they would have to come back is because we're really, we're really in some ways not doing this right by saying yes without knowing. But since it doesn't come back to the planning commission, it's incumbent upon the staff to tell the planning commission if they can't comply with something in the code that's required. My motion probably should have been to table until we know there's compliance with site plan issues, or to continue until site plan issues are verified, but.
I, I mean, I, I think you can, I think you can, if you want to make a motion to that effect, you can say, I move to approve with, in accordance with the staff report, on the condition, or on the presumption, I suppose, that it complies.
That's what I meant to say. Yes, thank you, I'll accept that.
I will, I will second that simplified explanation.
And I, I will accept it, and he seconds it. There you go. Thank you.
Motion, and a second. Okay, so if I could repeat?
Yes, he's going to restate the motion.
So the motion was to approve, based on the staff report, which didn't impose any extra conditions. It was essentially approve as generally proposed on this site plan, on the assumption that this site plan conforms with city code, right?
Yes.
And, and the second was?
And I second that.
Okay. And we will start with me, I.
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 Okay, after all that, there you go. Thank you. Let's go to item number six on our agenda, final subdivision plat for Crested Peak subdivision for property at thirteen seventy-eight South Sunset Drive.
All right, this one here is thirteen point four eight acres. It's been kicking around a few years. We had a preliminary plat, I can't remember, a long time ago. And then, it was going to come in for a final plat at the same time, but we run into some retain, retention, and the, and engineering stormwater stuff. And then we didn't know if it would affect the lot layout at that time, when we addressed that. Since then, we've addressed it, and the lot lines have not changed since the preliminary. Everything's as it was. We got the five acre piece that he's keeping for A5. And then we have the fourteen lots, they still look exactly the same as the preliminary. Everything's the same. We got the engineering worked out for the storm detention and stuff, I'm not sure.
How did you work that out?
I don't know, that's beyond my pay scale. But.
Are we doing underground retention? Does anyone?
I think they just found a place to put it.
Okay.
Existing place.
Pretty pricey to put it underground.
I think they, they found somewhere to put it.
Okay.
It's in, it's in the plat.
Yeah.
If you want to come up, we might have some questions for you if you're the applicant.
But I guess, what I'm going to say is, we recommend just approve the final plat for Crested Peaks.
Okay. Any, tell us your name, and then any comments you want to add.
Brad Walters. As mentioned, this is a piece of property I've had for a while. Looked at developing it in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, decided to table it, and then decided, beginning of last year, to go forward with it. As stated, there's twelve lots that will be new lots, and then Lot One is an existing home that we'll keep, and then Lot Six is just five point three acres that we'll be keeping and building our, our own home there as a greenbelt endorsed home, or property. We, I think we went in, went through preliminary in May, at which point I had a couple of developers give me a call, and I did some due diligence on, on some other options, and decided we didn't want to go in that direction. Then we had, the, well, I think it was before that, around, around that time, Sunset got widened, and, and so we had some, some discussion and collaboration with the city on, on making sure we were stubbed adequately for this, so we won't be opening up the road. And then water retention, we ended up with three retention ponds, two lot, one on Lot Two, and one on Lot fourteen, so right there next to the road.
Straight across, fourteen.
Yeah, straight across. And then one on the five and a quarter, five point three acres. And also did some work for discussion on the secondary water. So I, it's, as far as I'm concerned, it's, it's pretty tight, as in tightly buttoned up. And they're large lots, so I think it's kind of in line with what I understand the city wants in lots at this point.
Okay, thank you. And just to clarify for the commission, I mean, at this stage of the process, our discretion is virtually nil, other than to say, does this comply with preliminary plat, and is it meeting other requirements in the code? If the answer to that is yes, then we say approved. So, any comments, questions, or a motion?
I've got a couple of comments on the plat. Is this North Davis or Central Davis? Sue.
Seth Davis.
Okay, so, in the upper left corner, it needs to be changed. So I'm just going to point out some typos that you can give to the engineer, the applicant can give to the engineer. It says North Davis, change that to South Davis. And then, under the heading Crested Peak subdivision, it says July twenty twenty-one, that needs to say twenty twenty-two. Obviously, whatever month the council approves it, it may happen before that. So just make sure that's a twenty twenty-two. And then Sunset Drive needs to be labeled as a public road, as the major street there, it's not labeled as public that I can see, whereas Summit Lane is. And then, on the detention basins, where the two lots, sir, is it Mr. Walters?
Yeah.
The two detention basins, are they straight across the street from each other?
Yes.
Okay, so it would be Lot Fourteen and Lot Two?
Yes.
Okay. One concern I have is that you have a plat note that says that all easements are public utility and/or drainage easements. But these detention basins, which are going to be pretty prom, going to have to be pretty prominent to service the subdivision, are not shown on those two lots?
I think they are, in the documents that were.
Are they on the preliminary plat?
Not on the preliminary, on the final.
Well, I'm looking at final, and I don't see them.
The file that was sent to the city.
Aren't I looking at, aren't we doing final tonight?
It's final tonight, yeah.
Okay, well, those detention basins aren't shown, and the concern I have is that if you have those detention basins, they will impact the buildable area of Lots Two and Lot Fourteen. And so they should be shown on there, because when sellers go to look at those, they're going to need to know that that's, they need to be labeled as no build areas. So not only should they be shown on the property, but they need to be shown under the plat notices.
So, agreed.
Does that make sense?
The document you have is not the document that the engineers sent to the city and the city sent back, so.
What I'm saying is, if you have those detention basins here, and here, cross from each other?
Yeah, I, I see it.
They're, they're on the document that I had, so.
Yeah.
So.
And then, and there should be a plat note, an accompanying plat note that says, no build-in, no build-in detention basis.
Yep.
Okay, good, that's all the.
So, I, I, you know, well, I'm not sure what the process is to make sure that that document is presented to you, but.
Yeah, that's what the council needs to see.
Well, what I, what I'll say is, we're the final decision maker on this. So if that's important, which I agree it is, we, I think we just need to note that in any motion.
This does not go to council?
Correct.
Oh.
Yeah.
Great, and staff can do it, but the city engineer.
Right, we'll make sure the engineer gets that.
I'm ready to make a motion, if there's no other questions.
Anything else? Go for it.
Make a motion to approve the final subdivision plat for the Crested Peak subdivision for the property at thirteen seventy-eight South Sunset Drive, for Brad Walters.
Motion, is there a second?
Question on the motion?
Yeah.
The, the typos and issues I pointed out, would you be willing to accept those as part of the motion? Thank you.
Mindy will make sure she captures.
Okay, so there's an amended motion to catch, capture the typos and the notation of the detention easement, and is there a second?
I will second the amended motion.
Okay, let's start with Commissioner already.
Yes.
I.
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 I. All righty. Thank you. Okay, item seven is a call to the public, and I hear crickets. We'll go to.
There's one cricket over here.
We'll keep the public comment open if you'd like to come up. Okay, let's go to item number eight, reports, correspondence, calendar.
All right, I'll report on a few things. Let's see, a couple of upcoming agenda items, just to prep the, the commission, we'll be bringing back the item we had presented, I think in February, about the explosives in the residential zone. So, we've done, or, that all happened prior to my beginning with Kaysville. I've had, you know, an opportunity to do more due diligence and get a better understanding of that. We would like to bring that back to the planning commission for recommendation of approval or denial, and to carry that forward to the city council. Look for that on an upcoming agenda. Also, we have been made aware that the appeal process we have in our land use code is not in compliance with state code. So we're going to work to get that where it needs to be, and we'll be bringing that to, to the commission in an upcoming meeting. We'll work on having the model homes for design centers as a permitted use in the residential zones, and bring that forward as well. Also, wanted to mention that on May seventh, the, the city is hosting a water conservation awareness event here in the council chambers from nine AM to eleven AM. And we're going to have all of our recre, or, secondary water service providers present, Weaver Basin Water Conservancy District, come, and Utah State University will come and share tips on water conservation, zerescaping, those types of things, to help residents understand what they can and can't do. And then, yes, we have an updated webpage now on the Kaysville City website, that's specific to water conservation. And towards that end, we do want to let anyone in the public who's listening or watching know that they can remove grass from their park strip, or their front lawn, backyard lawn. We don't have any requirements in our ordinances that would prohibit them from doing that. They're welcome to make those adjustments, you don't need a permit to do any landscaping. We're encouraging that water conservation effort, and hope that anybody who has questions will reach out to us or come to that event on, on Saturday, May seventh.
Is the incentive still out there for people to take out their grass in the park strip?
One you should ask, that question.
They talked about it when we went up to the, and had the tour.
We did have a discussion with the city council about that, and at this point in time, the council didn't want to move forward with implementing an ordinance. They did want us to continue conversations with Weaver Basin and see what opportunities may have, but essentially, the concern of staff's ability to ensure or enforce compliance with what they're requesting just is not something that they were comfortable with.
Because the idea was, if you were going to be eligible for their incentive, we had to have an ordinance on the books that was in accordance with what they wanted.
Correct.
And, and the council's at this stage saying, let's not do that.
Correct, yeah. It was, you know, I think, an interesting discussion, but essentially, at this point, given our limited staff bandwidth and, and resources, it would be unwise of us to adopt an ordinance that we know we can't enforce or regulate, so.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean that residents can't do that on their own, just means that as far as, at this point in time, Weaver Basin wouldn't offer their rebate program to Kaysville City residents without us adopting an ordinance. And, and it doesn't mean that we may not do something in the future as well, but at this point in time, that's where the council landed, was that we're just going to continue with status quo and hope that.
So Weaver still has the incentive out there, if we change the ordinance, that encourages people to do this. I don't understand why the council didn't go for that, especially with another drought year hit us.
I could, I could offer a guess, but they probably all have each their own opinion.
Just don't want to be overregulated?
That's one reason, but I think.
Being told what to do too much?
I mean, that's one reason. I think they're, in my opinion at least, I don't know if the council agrees, they all have their own different reasons, like I say, probably. There were some pretty heavy-handed requirements for single-family homeowners who are building a new home, to, you know, abide by. And, you know, maybe we need those things, that's a, that is a policy question, no doubt, but maybe the council's not ready to stick their neck outs, that, necks out that far.
Yeah, I can see that, but, boy, in another drought year, the yards will ugly out, where you could have a beautiful rock feature in your front yard that would look beautiful.
Yeah.
Instead of dead grass, it's.
Well, I, I mean, individuals can do that, they.
Yeah.
That's a possibility, that's not anything that is prohibited. So, I, I think the challenging part is, and I understand Weaver Basin's position on this, I had a conversation with them again earlier this week, but, but, but they are wanting to make sure that future development comes in with certain requirements, and their way, and I'm going to use the term chasing their tails, that's what was used in a training that Louis put out a few weeks ago, but i- if they allow somebody right now, who's existing, to flip their strip, but we don't have requirements that prohibit somebody to come in on a future lot, to come in and put green grass in their park strip, they feel like they're chasing their tail. And so, understanding that, you know, it, I, I can see why they are tying the two together, but, you know, Weaver Basin essentially is saying, unless cities adopt some type of standards for future development, we're not going to allow that rebate program to, to be eligible for their residents. So there's a handful of cities out there that have adopted that right now. Some of those cities, Clearfield does not have any secondary water, Leighton has only forty percent that has, well, sixty percent is on secondary water, forty percent of their community doesn't have access to secondary water. So, so it, it's a, it's a situation where really, it's not a one size fits all. I think the council is concerned about conservation and drought, but essentially, they felt like residents can do it. There's nothing to stop or prohibit a resident from, from installing or maintaining water-wise landscaping, and we hope that they will do that.
One thing I'll say that. One thing I'll say that gave, that the, the state gave the council some cover this last legislative session, I just learned this, this week, but the state um, set a, a deadline by which all secondary water providers have to require, have to, not just for new construction, is my understanding, every user has to have metered, a metered connection for secondary water by like twenty thirty, twenty thirty? Yeah, so I remember when we had that meeting up there, this little, the little tour we took, after that, we had the discussion, why don't we just make everyone have meters on the, on their secondary water? That would help, it's not going to solve the problem, but it's going to help, and the state, man, the state requires that now, so anyway.
Yeah, there were some other things too that came out of the legislative session that uh, that, that would eliminate or prohibit a city from essentially uh, requiring park strip, soldered turf, uh, we don't do that anyway, but uh, there's now state code that would prohibit uh, a municipality or a county from requiring grass in an area that's less than eight feet wide. Um, starting on May fifth, this information is on our website and we'll speak about it again at our water conservation event, but starting on way fit, May fifth, an HOA may not enforce or require uh, landscaping that wouldn't be water-wise. And so uh, what we've been telling folks prior to that law being passed is you need, if you live in an area with an HOA, you need to check with what your HOA regulations are. Starting May fifth, an HOA can't enforce something um, on their books if it's not water-wise. So essentially, an HOA can't prohibit water right, water-wise landscaping. So I think that was a great move on the state's part because there is a lot of areas that the city wouldn't, I, I mean, we would not regulate that, but HOAs do.
Okay, um, if that's everything, um, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. Thank you.